Mr. Cozer.
Here.
All right, a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving right along. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting held May 29, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any comments, changes, alterations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Stayed.
That passes. We're all here, seven zero.
Six zero one. He abstained.
Oh, sorry. All right, you want to do anything?
No.
All right, next is a special report. Usually don't have one of those. It's regarding the Police Department Traffic Enforcement Initiative.
Thank you. I want to introduce Jay Davis. You all know Jay. He's been here for quite a number of years.
Long time.
But in response to all of the traffic-related questions I get from the public regarding enforcement or stop signs or whatever within our developments, put it out to the guys and Jay came up with a plan to kind of approach that, to quantify all of the complaints, to respond to the residents in a very effective and efficient manner. So I asked him to come in tonight and just lay that out for you and give you a better understanding of what we're doing and how we're doing it and the successes that we're viewing. He's put a lot of work and a lot of time, not into just this presentation, but the overall program. The guys have really bought into it, I think, and done a good job with it. And Jay's done a great job leading it. So Jay, would you give your presentation?
Thank you, guys, for having me tonight. I'll try to make it short, painless. Like the chief said, basically, we get a lot of complaints. A lot of them involve around speeding and things like that. In the past, I don't think we were doing enough to address these problems, so I addressed my concerns with the chief. And he was very receptive to coming up with some kind of quantified plan to address the complaints we were receiving. So as a result, we came up with a number of goals we wanted to accomplish. First of all, we wanted to make sure we're making the community a safer place. Everything we were doing out there was going to address that issue. Second, we wanted to create a closer relationship between our police officers and the citizens that we serve. And third, we wanted to be transparent. We wanted to be able to show people, you're filing a complaint, we're taking your complaint seriously, and here's the things we're doing to address it. So as a result, we came up with a number of strategies to address that. The first thing we did was we created a traffic enforcement officer for each shift. So each shift has a traffic enforcement officer, so that's four total.
Much pressure.
And those traffic enforcement officers are responsible for contacting the complainants when they come in. So if somebody calls with a speeding complaint, it's assigned to a certain guy. The certain guy from each shift handles everyone that comes in. So he contacts the complaint. He'll obtain any of the pertinent information, such as the days of the week, the times, the different violations that this person is concerned about. We also formed a questionnaire that we're using. The traffic enforcement will go through, the officer will go through a questionnaire with the complaint to make sure we're obtaining all the information so that we can best address that complaint. And then last, he goes out and conducts a site review and completes a traffic extra enforcement sheet, which requires a 14-day saturated patrol of that area. And he'll make recommendations as to what kind of enforcement should be done during that period.
What does that mean, saturated patrol? Just more frequent trips there or actually sitting there?
We're actually going out and conducting specialized patrol to address that certain problem. I'm going to get into that later.
Right.
And probably a lot of the questions that you guys may have, I'll address throughout the presentation. The second thing we did was we created a traffic enforcement coordinator. Those duties have fallen to me. Basically, I review the questionnaire and the extra patrol form once the 14-day saturated patrols are complete. I complete a site survey of the area in question, and I determine if it's properly posted with speed limit signs, determine if there's any other measures, such as other postings, such as, you know, children at play signs or something like that that need to be put in place. And I also assess if there's any road defects that are part of the problem. I complete a statistical analysis of the data that's collected, and from that data, I determine if additional saturated patrols need to be completed. And they're completed at a seven-day increment. I also contact the complaint and advise them of the data that we collected, any actions that we took towards their complaint, and any of the recommendations I intend to make. I offer to meet with the complaint and show them individual data that we collect. I also, you know, encourage that because I want to show them the data. I want to show them the number of tickets we've written, the number of warnings we've written, what the high speeds were, what the low speeds were, any of that kind of stuff. So they have a true idea of what it is we're doing out there. So we've talked about saturated patrols for a minute. I want to go into that a little more detail. Once the traffic enforcement officer identifies an area for enforcement, officers from the individual patrol shifts are assigned around the hours which are being identified as problem times for these different locations. Officers are encouraged to involve the complainants and anyone else in the area who questions what it is we're doing. We want to try to involve the public as much as possible in what we're doing here. And I'll give you an example. Stone Brook Drive recently came up, and we did a number of NRAD enforcements over there. During that period of time, I had the opportunity to speak to an individual who had complained about speeding on Stone Brook Drive. We were conducting the NRAD enforcement, so I explained to him what it was we were doing, explained the NRAD unit to him, and actually invited him to sit in the police car and actually observe how the machine worked. He respectfully declined, but at one point, a car had passed by, and obviously, he thought it was traveling at a high rate of speed, and he come out and asked me, hey, how fast was that car going? Showed him the monitor, and it was 32 mile an hour. Just a little food for thought. Next, the officers utilize all the tools that are made available to them. In the cases of speeding complaints, we may utilize existing speed zones that are already set up and may create new ones. But we've really taken to the NRAD unit that the township has recently purchased, and we've used that to great success as far as measuring the different speeds, especially on these saturated patrols. And for anybody who's not familiar with the NRAD unit, it's basically a device that's deployed on both sides of the road. It emits two beams, three foot apart, and when a car breaks the one beam, the machine starts. When a car breaks the second beam, the machine stops, and it calculates the average speed over that three-foot distance. And then it wirelessly sends that information back to the police car, and it appears on a screen in the police car. So it's a very good device, and we've used it quite a bit since we've purchased it. We've also taken a zero-tolerance approach to the saturated patrols. Basically, we're sending our officers out, and we're asking them to go out, and any violation they observe, they're to act on it, and we expect them to issue citations for the different violations. Well, this isn't an attempt to punish the motoring public. From my standpoint, this is important because we want to educate the public. We want them to understand that we're encouraging our officers to speak with the motorists and tell them, this is why we're here. We're having complaints. We're conducting these extra patrols. And the point of these extra patrols is zero tolerance. So we want these people to understand what it is we're out there doing. We want them to go out and tell other people that they're out there doing. So part of that whole process is education. At the end of this 14-day initial saturated patrol, if we're averaging 1.5 traffic stops or more, then what we do is we continue the saturated patrols for another seven days. At the end of that seven days, it's reevaluated, and the same criteria apply. We keep doing it every seven days until we reach our goal. And our goal is to be below 1.5 traffic stops per average for the saturated patrols. Once we reach that, below 1.5 average, then we cease the saturated patrols, and it's referred back to patrol for this routine enforcement. This does leave room for other?
Excuse me. The 1.5, are you talking about occurrences of speeding in the course of all of the observations in a day?
Correct. We're taking the average of the number of cars we're stopping, and if that average is above the 1.5 or above, then we're continuing.
Thank you.
Sure. We leave other, we leave room for, to also continue the saturated patrols, other than just the statistical information. If I'm reviewing some of the logs that are coming in, and I'm seeing that there's a high volume of cars, or there's these periodic excessive speeds, say double the speed limit, then again, we may redo the seven-day saturated patrols. One of the examples I pulled, and this is a similar example we've been experiencing since we started this program for the last few months. It's a typical result we've been seeing, and started with the program, is the 300 Blocker Bunker Hill Drive. Basically, we had a complaint of speeding vehicles Monday through Friday. The complaint was the vehicles were speeding between 7:00 AM and 7:15 AM, and 2:30 PM and 2:45 PM. This is a common occurrence. This is mainly what our speeding complaints come in as, because it correlates with school traffic. And the complaint in this one was insistent that the majority of the violations were coming from high school-age students. So we conducted eight saturated patrols in a 14-day period. We totaled four hours and 55 minutes on these details. And all the saturated patrols were during the times that the complaint had identified were problem times. There were two citations issued and zero warnings issued, and the two citations that were issued were both issued to adults that lived in the general area. The NRAD unit was also deployed on these saturated patrols for a total of two hours. The average speeds over the eight saturated patrols came out to 25.7 miles per hour, and we only averaged 0.25 contacts in those eight saturated patrols. This is a example of the traffic enforcement questionnaire that we're asking our traffic enforcement officers to ask the complaints when they take the initial report. This is the traffic enforcement extra patrol sheet that each officer has to fill out every time he goes out and conducts the extra patrols. So in conclusion, in conclusion, the Police Department has taken steps to address these traffic complaints. We're trying to involve the citizens, and we are aggressively addressing these complaints through the zero-tolerance approach, and we're utilizing all the tools that the township is providing us. We're following up with the complaints, and we let them know what action we took, and we're open to disclosing all the information that we're accumulating during these saturated patrols. That's pretty much all I have for you guys tonight. If there's any questions?
Are there any unmarked cars? Or unmarked cars?
Both. But generally, we try to assign the unmarked car. And when we're using the NRAD system, it generally takes two cars. So usually, we're using the unmarked car to come up with the speeds, and then we basically, for lack of a better term, a chase car to actually stop the cars and issue the citations. It'd be a marked car.
Using the NRAD, is there a certain number of lost cars over the 16th speed limit that you have to deal with?
Again, when we send officers out to do these saturated patrols, we want zero tolerance. So at 11 miles an hour over, we're expecting them to-
So 10 is the, 10 is when you have to deal with them. And 25 over 36 as well?
Right. So, yeah.
That's state mandated, sorry. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what it's done with.
So that, and when we reach that level, we're expecting them to write these citations.
How sustainable is this program? I mean, it obviously takes manpower. And I mean, is this something that can go on for an extended period of time, or is this going to be, you know, a short duration and then go on to something else?
No, we expect it to carry on. I mean, yes, it expands manpower, but as long as we have the staffing available, we're doing them. For example, the Bunker Hill, obviously, she's reporting Monday through Friday, so in that 14-day period, we did eight. So I'm assuming two were not done because of staffing. But as long as we can, you know, the staffing's appropriate, you know, we can maintain it.
So the concern probably is when Harry writes about this in the paper, can you guys give them the data with all's?
Yeah. Give them the wrong number, Harry. Put the NRAD, can you run a citation off of the NRAD?
We do, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it's certified. It's approved by the state for us to run. So generally, what we're doing is one officer's collecting the data from the NRAD, and the other officer's actually stopping the cars and issuing the citations.
Well, I can certainly attest it's working, because I know you guys had targeted Center Church and Johnston Road about two months ago, and certainly, the speeding on that street has decreased significantly, and I appreciate that.
Yes, the NRAD unit has been put out there, I believe, at least three times in the last month.
I know. One day, when I was at home with my sick daughter, you guys had three people pulled over in front of my driveway, of course, today, so.
I just wanted to say, I think it's a very nice tool, good work on your part.
Very much.
I think it's really a good tool for the traffic calming. We get requests for that, and this sounds like this will be complimentary to that.
Well, actually, inside of the traffic calming policy, this is now step two, when people send in a request, that we do this with the Police Department.
Well, I think, too, it's good to tell, show the people we're being responsive to their concerns. That's the good news. The bad news is we're being responsive to their concerns, and people are not being stopped. But it's the residents who are doing it. It just raises consciousness, so thank you for doing it.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the work.
What we're finding is most of the ones we have done are very similar to the Bunker Hill, and we're not finding that we're writing very many violations, to be honest with you. We're finding that the speeds aren't nearly as high as what people think, and-
Yeah, I was going to ask that, if maybe just our perception of what is actually speeding.
Right.
Because, you know, when you're in a residential neighborhood, if a car's 125, it can look, it can look fast.
Sure. I think you're 30, 30, or you've gone to 34.
I believe we've done five of these now, and we've not had to do an additional seven-day saturated patrol. We're finding that the numbers are pretty low.
Interesting.
And I think that helps with the Traffic Calming Committee, part of it, and I've talked to Ryan about that. It's, you know, because we're going out and showing people the data, and I know the complaint from Bunker Hill was just, she just could not believe the numbers that I showed her. But they're, you know, they're just-
They're a lot. Well, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Excellent.
I'm kind of done here. There are like three, if not maybe four of the roads that you focused on. If you don't want me to mention the roads, I won't. Where there is a higher percentage of speeds in excess or equal to twice the speed limit. I don't think there's any harm in saying one of them is Route 19. What would be the fine that someone might reasonably expect being stopped 160 from Route 19?
Without doing the math, just doing the math in my head, you're right around $159, $149 somewhere in that range for 60 and a 40. You're looking at 20 mile an hour over the speed limit, you're right around $159.
Do we still have points or is there?
20 overs, probably four points without looking it up, so.
But it's not an automatic loss if they're licensed?
No.
They go 31 and more.
31, yeah. 31, no.
Yeah, the main issue is that residential zones, when they're double the speed limit, that's what PennDOT's looking at, as far as their-
Then we have several, I think, two or three streets that-
But again, you know, doing a lot of speed enforcement, we, you know, like you said, you can cite a number of spots that are, you know, the speeds are high, but it's actually pretty rare that we're getting double the speed limit, even, you know, 50, 51. You know, we're not getting a whole lot of those.
All right, thank you.
Come on in. Anyone else? Oh, great. Nice job.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next item on the agenda is audience comments. This is limited to five minutes for anyone who would like to speak from the audience about a non-agenda item, which would be an item that's not on the agenda. I don't see anyone coming forward, so we'll move to the next item, which is unfinished business, which is done. On to new business. First up, the annual special permit for a tent sale at Sun Chevrolet.
This has gone on for a number of years. I don't think we've been getting this since I believe we were doing it before.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Seven zero. Next item is awarding a contract for the 2018 Street Rejuvenator Program, which normally is a-
I don't even know what layout it is. Is it a council room here? Or is it over there?
On June 4, we opened bids for the 2018 Street Rejuvenator Program. As in the past, there's only one firm that has submitted a bid. That unit price is 85 cents a square yard, which is 2.3% increase over the 2017 price, but it should be pointed out that it hasn't increased prior to that since 2013. Applying that price to the amount of square yards that we anticipate doing, the bid comes out to $113,883.01, and it's my recommendation and Mr. Zemitz's recommendation that we award a contract with pavement technology. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Seven zero. Next up would be the resolution amending the Personnel Manual establishing job descriptions for the position of part-time firefighter and zoning slash code enforcement officer.
That's correct. The change for the part-time firefighter is to create a change in the required employment criteria. Currently, firefighters, all firefighters, full-time or part-time, require firefighter two certification. Dan believes that that's an impediment towards getting qualified candidates who, for a part-time position, and has suggested that for a part-time position, it be changed to a firefighter one. The other change is you will, as you know, Emily Moldovan is leaving Peters Township to take another job. We need to fill that position, and one of the things that we do as a matter of our hiring process to go back and look at existing job descriptions, to make sure that the job description as written matches what the expectation is for the job. So there are changes that focus this position on zoning and code enforcement going forward. That's not to say that they won't be involved, and the person wouldn't be involved in the planning process, but that focus is no longer going to be on GIS. We have a GIS coordinator now. So the other thing that it's going to do is to repeal the existing job description for planer code enforcement officer, so put that in mind.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution amending the Personnel Manual for the job descriptions for part-time firefighter and zoning slash code enforcement officers. Also, I'd like to note that I believe I see a need for a correction. It's on PDF page 31, where you're talking about the Class B commercial driver license. It's a north one within 150 like of being hired.
Yeah, it should be days.
I think it's Resolution 040497, just for clarity's sake.
Well, a few questions before we vote.
The resolution's going to be 060118.
Well, whatever the number is, I make that.
Okay. Yes.
040497 was the prior one.
On the firefighter, first of all, the skill level required between 1 and 2, is it substantial or?
Yes. You know, my question to Deputy Chief-
McLachlan.
McLachlan drew a blank there, was, you know, how long does it take in that period? He says it would not be uncommon for it to be a few years between firefighter one and firefighter two.
So the question I had was related to scheduling. Now, I presume that they're going to manage that so that they have, don't have a full crew of firefighter ones versus twos? So do they feel that they can manage scheduling?
I don't think that'll be a problem, because these part-time people, for the most part, are filling out schedules, so they're working with firefighter twos.
So then the second question, normally, we promote, not normally, often, we promote part-time to full-time when full-time open. So in this particular case, that person will have had to achieve that number two status before they could actually-
That's correct.
Okay, so that's clarification.
Yes.
I expected that, but wanted to bear in mind.
Yeah.
Now, I have a question about the zoning enforcement. I had two comments about that, just a clarification. Is that still the same grade level as the prior position?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I'm very much in favor of a more proactive approach to code enforcement, and I wonder if we could actually put that word in there, proactive approach.
You can put that word in there, but I can tell you whether you put that word in there or not won't matter, because that will be the approach.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, it's just, the staff drives through the township, they see things, it shouldn't wait for a resident. Not that they always do, but I think that it's very important that-
I don't think that they always do, but I think that we want to change, we want to be sure to be out in the community and that people see us.
Thank you.
All right. Any further comments? I think we have a motion correct in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And that is also seven zero. And then, next item on the agenda is resolution amending the Police Department Policy Manual.
At last Monday, we had a workshop. Part of that workshop was to review the, a set of proposed policies for the manual. What this resolution does is implement those policies as they were redundant to council.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 06-02-18, amending the Peters Township Police Policy Manual.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Monica second. Mrs. Merrill, second. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It sounds like six, or seven to zero. And that is it for-
Please thank Captain Ford, that's one.
New business. Next is payroll bills.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the payroll and bills. I find them to be in order. I make a motion that we approve the payroll and bills.
Second. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Also seven zero. Do you want to discuss correspondence?
Only to point out that Peters Township, once again, is the recipient of the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Distinguished Budget Presentation.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
How many years in a row is that?
You know, with Ryan-
For the CAFR, it was 22, so I'd imagine the budget would be in that neighborhood as well, but I don't know offhand. It's a dynasty.
That's outstanding. That's outstanding work.
We expect no less.
No pressure, Mike.
Absolutely not.
Okay, next, we have minutes from the various boards. Any comments for anyone on that?
I have a question on two things. Parking ramp. In the people minutes, they made a couple references regarding revisions to current policies and then to new policies. And it was changes to the background clearance and a policy for collection logs and one for fundraising. I wonder, will those be coming to council?
Those will come to council.
And the second thing, just an observation, Peters Creek Sanitary Authority, minutes from April, seemed to report there is some progress being made in getting some financial information. I don't know if they have everything they need yet from Clerton, but it seems like, from the language in the minutes, it looks like something's happening. Have you had any feedback?
Actually, I was talking to Rick today, and he did not bring that up in our discussion, so I don't-
Maybe I was reading more hopefully than accurately. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Ms. Salinas?
I do have two things.
It says none.
I know. It had none. When I wrote it, I had none.
Right here, it says none.
Well, the one I have, we have, this is people would drive at the intersection of Elgwood Road. We have received two or three requests from people who use this intersection coming on the Elgwood Road, and the concern is about the limited site distance to the left. And the solution that residents are proposing is placing a mirror at this intersection. Now, the township has had a policy of not placing mirrors at any intersection.
State road?
Well, and that was the first thing, is I suggested to them, they needed to talk to PennDOT. PennDOT says you're talking about something to serve as a local road, and if there's a mirror to go up, it will be the township's responsibility. The problem with the mirrors are a couple things. One, they're difficult to maintain. If we put one up here, be prepared for more requests for mirrors, and you've got this positive responsibility when they become damaged to immediately get them repaired.
Why can't we just trim the trees back?
Well, we can look at that. I don't know whether that solves that problem or not, but it would be the state's responsibility to do it, but in this case, if the alternative is a mirror, I would rather trim the trees back.
I think you have to just trim a little bit there.
You know, I think that the same situation exists on Springdale and Seattle Trail, where the stop is there, and the left coming up on Seattle, there's not a stop, and you can't-
stop is there, and the light coming up on Seattle, there's no stop, and you can't see through there either.
But that's half the fun, but that's half the fun of going through there.
Fun would be one word.
It was interesting that one of the first persons that talked to me about this, I said, "Well, there are no mirrors in Peters Township," and she corrected me, and she's absolutely right. If you come down the ramp off of Route 19, there's a mirror right there. She called me up later, says, "I tried to use that mirror, and I nearly got killed." And she said, "You changed your position with regard to mirrors." So I do think they're difficult if you're not accustomed to them to use.
I think trimming the trees is the, to me, is the only solution.
Well, you know what? I'll be back. I'll talk to the Public Works Department, and we can do that.
Will there be a way to put a sign that said, "Pass caution or slow dangerous intersection coming from..."
There is one.
It's not so much coming away from the T, but coming from East McMurray, because you're coming around the bend.
Yeah. Actually, we have put additional signage up to indicate that, that intersection, there's an orange diamond that sits on top of that sign to draw your attention to it, so...
Why am I still getting grabbed with their, like, demands? Sorry.
The other, the other item that I wanted to bring up, we haven't had this problem before, but we're having a problem attracting people to work in the Public Works Department for the summer in the parks. I do have two individuals who are interested in employment. One of them is the son of a police officer who lives in town. The other is the son of a library employee who lives in Bethel Park. We have done multiple initiatives to get applications, and we can't get them. Does council have a problem with hiring any of these people?
None of the people supervised the kids, so it's not a...
Yes, no.
...concentration on that. How many are you looking for? Will two satisfy?
We need probably another two.
Another two. I'll send them out.
All right. Those are the two items that are under miscellaneous none.
Could I, could I ask a question related to paving? East McMurray and Just About, we're supposed to have work done. Where are we with schedules for those people are asking?
Well, I guess the first thing on East McMurray is that the road is to be repaired from the waterline break, and that work is scheduled to start on June 13. Shortly thereafter, the roadwork was to start on East McMurray Road, because the intent is to have it done before school starts.
And then, Just About started?
You know what? I was down, I did go down today. I was down at Just About late last week, and it had not started yet, so I'm totally thrown because the, the maintenance supervisor from PennDOT had actually assured us it would be beginning the week before. That contractor has three projects. This is just one of those projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Any items for the next agenda? All right. Being that they're done, this meeting is adjourned.
I have a brief executive session.